Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting, the City Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, July 9th, to order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Malcho.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran. Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie. Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Ramira Valderrama.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, we have a quorum, barely. Hopefully, the rest will show up here. Okay, I need a motion for approval of the agenda, but before we do that, we need to reverse order of a couple of items. So, the King County Comprehensive Solid Waste Plan, the gentleman who's presenting is stuck in traffic, so if I can get someone to move the Zaccus Basin Plan up in its place.
It's been moved.
Okay, it's been moved.
Seconded.
Okay, and seconded. Okay. So, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Just around.
Yeah.
And just the first two items, split. Okay, yes, aye.
Okay, by a vote of, I think that was 5-0, we will amend that agenda. So, that means we will move to public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person or five minutes of representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM at the end of business day to the City Clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. Thank you. First, I have Mark Cross, followed by Karen Herring.
Thank you, Mayor Malcho, and City Council members. I wanted to thank the council for some of the additions that were made to the draft Zaccus Basin Plan. I like that you're thinking about the basin holistically and are open to not only the drainage challenges along some of the roads, but also some of the actual sidewalk and bicycle lane needs potentially in the future, so that those are brought to people's memory fresh when the basin plan comes up again. Some of the issues that the basin plan asks you to address, I think are going to unravel for you over a longer period of time. I know that in the fall, you have a meeting scheduled, and I appreciate that as well, with the water districts to talk about their plans, what they're really planning to do, under what circumstances they do it. I think you'll have a lot of questions about how do we get pockets of the city that are 40 and 50 years old, that are on septic tanks, that maybe need to transfer over to sewer? How does that happen? How can we make it happen? Are there grants available? How can we do this and not make it, you know, a gift to public funds? You'll have a lot of questions, but it'll also help establish probably some of the difficult limits that you'll have in finishing out the utility infrastructure for the city of Smamish. We are inside the urban growth boundary. I personally live what will be five short miles to sound transit. This area is going to be under more pressure in the future, if that's even imaginable. But finishing out the urban infrastructure, roads, sewer, storm drainage, is going to be very important, and understanding what the sewer districts, water districts can do, will do, want to do, maybe what they think their limits are, is going to help you understand what your limits are going to be, particularly that will help inform the land use plan that you're going to do. I would note that in the Zaccus Basin, you have a wetland at the bottom of the road, I think it's Wetland Number 5, that's actually zoned R6 on our comprehensive plan. Twenty years ago, I think I raised that as an issue, that really R6, which was an old remnant of King County zoning, was not appropriate for that property. It still is not appropriate, it's probably less appropriate than it was 20 years ago. So, you'll find that as you do the land use plan, some of the opportunities or the lack thereof of being able to apply for the full package of infrastructure extensions is going to become clear and is going to help shape and inform the land use plan as well as the Zaccus Basin. There are drainage issues in our neighborhood. I hope that we can have the ongoing discussion about public interest in solving those problems in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Herring, followed by Todd Southwick.
Karen Herring, 23684 Southeast 32nd Way. I did send a PowerPoint, but I'm not going to click it, I'm just going to read to it. So, you can click it if you want, and I'd appreciate it. Okay, Slides 1 and 2. Basin plans cost $200,000 to $400,000, and they are now required. Also, each plan lives for a very long time. For example, King County's East Lake Smamish Basin Plan Final Draft from 1994 lives on in our city adopted code, so it's important the information be accurate, plus completely cover the basin being studied, the entire basin. If names, dates, or stormwater references are incorrect, then folks reading the information, like myself, may be misinformed. Please ensure errors are corrected and that key emissions are added. Not all of us are engineers. For Slide 3, every basin plan should cover and address the following: flooding or erosion, safety hazards, risks or damage to property or infrastructure, water quality degradation in groundwater seepage, degradation to the general welfare, excuse me, welfare of the community, and last but not least, identify areas where the infiltrative capacity of outwashed soils is exceeded or overwhelmed. Flooding warns that stormwater resources must be repaired or enhanced, and soon, to avoid safety risks to life and property. Our comp plan says, protect people, property, and our environment in areas of natural hazards, which include landslide area. The Zaccus Basin Pan, I'm sorry, the Zaccus Basin Plan should re- Oh, should include the Smamish Trail. King County will hold, will build an ADA walkway by the traffic signal at the intersection. So, when more people walk here and bike through this important intersection, flooding must be addressed and safety improved. Gravel carried by stormwater overflows imperilous, is perilous for bicycle riders, drivers, braking, and pedestrians. Furthermore, water on the roadways sends pollutants to our sensitive lakes of Smamish. You know, that's my worry. Last, looking, looking at the cost estimates for our capital improvements, one of the most expensive items is for detention of stormwater. Over the years, the city has kept and used old code and regulations. Sorry, I'm running out of time. As one of your stewards, I ask that along Lewis Thompson, you take every consideration for my neighbors who are suffering from flooding and runoff, and please, and thank you.
Thank you. Todd Southwick, followed by Mary Victor.
Todd Southwick, 413-209th Avenue Northeast, City of Smamish. Dear City Council, City Manager, and City Staff, I've lived in my house since 1999 and just before the City of Smamish Incorporated. I pay taxes and stormwater fees annually as required. Children of families in our area attend public schools. We can call the police, the fire department, and emergency medical services, and they respond. But while we continue to pay increasing surface water fees, plus taxes to the city, we do not receive drainage improvements nor stormwater services. I've emailed previously stating that according to the city streets map, 20% of the roads in our city are private. Thus, it seems to make sense for 20% of stormwater projects to be funded, allowed, completed in private areas. King County has a Neighborhood Drainage Assistance Program for unincorporated areas. King County also identifies and implements capital improvement projects. Senior Stormwater Manager, Toni DeZel, stated in her email that Kitsap County and King County both have programs to help property owners with private drainage issues. Why doesn't Smamish? As reflected in City Councilmember Pam Stewart's email, citizens have pointed out taxes and fees are paid by everyone, and stormwater drainage issues should be serviced by the city, especially for older neighborhoods. As you know, the City of Smamish allocates $200,000 per year in the budget for drainage, neighborhood drainage. In April 8th of 2019, emailed response from the mayor, she stated funds are not parsed out to public or private uses by percentage. Mayor Christie Malcho also stated that council relies on staff to identify projects. She did indicate that all of the funds, the full $200,000, could be allocated to one area by council instead of smaller projects. I ask that the budgeting of $200,000 possibly increased by $50,000 annually serve neighborhood drainage problems where they exist and continue to worsen. It is time to address fairness by providing stormwater services throughout the city. I ask City Council to discuss and provide direction with policy in response to complaints by citizens to manage stormwater issues where and when they occur. Council had a recent discussion on stormwater code amendments, and the Zaccus Basin Plan is on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Victor.
Good evening. My name is Mary Victor, and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. So, we waited for the Zaccus Basin Plan to come, and in that time, the Tamarack Tightline scored 65 points, as did the Lewis Thompson Tightline. And those projects, I feel, should be implemented and deserve first priority, and here's some of the background on Tamarack. Northeast 4th Street is an area where it's 22% to 23% slope, and it is in a landslide hazard area. These are pictures of the water running and after it runs, showing you what the erosion looks like. It happens on both sides of Northeast 4th Street, a bit more on the south, but also on the north. And the picture at the bottom, you can see there, the water just really has no place to go because it used to infiltrate in the soils, and then there's just too much runoff. So, what the runoff has to do is actually take a 90-degree turn in the ditch and head down there to 210th Avenue Northeast. And you might be saying, hey, why not just send it to the places below? Well, when the water is sent there, we've had landslides on Northeast 4th Street between 209th and 208th Avenues, and the city put a temporary pipe intending that there would be a permanent solution. And also, if you look at the bottom of the pipe, it's really not an appropriate discharge location. That's someone's land area, and that's the playground that we used to have that ended up tilting and had to be removed for safety. Also, if we sent it along the road on 209th, that's been flooding too. The bottom picture there is from 2015, the top picture is from 2017. So, there just isn't places to put the water anymore. So, what happens is that water that makes that 90-degree turn from Northeast 4th to 210th, it cross basin overflows going south on 210th Avenue and heads to Zaccus Creek. And you can see that water doesn't come from the driveways of the houses, that comes from Northeast 4th Street. And then the bottom picture, you can actually see the erosion that started occurring on the other side of Lewis Thompson Road above Zaccus Creek. So, fine silt and sediments are transported by gushy, flashing flows, and they head to that Key Salmon Stream, whether you believe it or not. These pictures actually just show the amount of sediment that moved between October 22nd and 26th, six days. So, there were five emergency surface water ordinances for Inglewood and Tamarack between 2014 and 2016. Our CIP for a tightline was identified in 2012, but they thought a developer would do it, but it still needs to get done. There are overflows that do occur because Tamarack floods now all the way to the public right of way. It carries pollutants and silt, it carries metals such as copper and zinc, which are very bad for salmon, and it impacts safety for all. So, this is, the top picture is on Lewis Thompson Road, where there's kind of curvy roads there, not very safe, and the bottom pictures are night and day at that parkway just above where it goes to the trail to Lake Smamish. So, I did send an email in with this. I asked that you look at this. I also would like to say that the Growth Management Hearings Board has put categories of critical areas into two. Those whose functions are valued and protected by the beneficial uses they provide, like wetlands, aquifer recharge, or maybe streams. And the second one is areas where protection is needed due to the threat posed to persons and property, such as frequently flooded and geologic hazard areas. Please protect them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Okay, seeing none. We're done. All right, adjourned. Okay, we have nothing on our consent, so we reversed order since our presenter was stuck in traffic. So, we are going to item number 2, which is the introduction to the draft Zaccus Basin Plan. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, Council. I'll turn this over to Toni and Danica for our presentation.
All right, thank you. So, good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. We have an extra exhibit here that's not part of the packet. It is what Councilmember Stewart requested last time, which is a summary of public comments that we received about the basin plan and our staff response, as well as action that we'll take in changing the draft basin plan to the final basin plan. So, I apologize, this was not in there ahead of time, but got it under the last minute, finished it up. All right, so as Toni passes those out, I'll get started with the, kind of introducing the topic. So, the Zaccus Basin Plan introduction that we're sharing with you tonight, we're excited to share with you the work we've done on this plan. You've heard, or ended this basin, you've heard from citizens who also are very concerned with this. So, without further ado, I will begin. So, agenda tonight, we're going to be talking about an overview of what, is this on? Oh. How do I do that? There we go. All right, we're going to be starting with an overview of what basin planning is holistically, diving in specifically about the Zaccus Basin Plan, talking about the results we developed as part of this plan, how we're going to implement it, and what the next steps are for us. So, starting broad, what is a basin? It's also known as a watershed, and people usually understand that a lot more instead of basin. So, we call it a watershed or a basin. So, a watershed or a drainage basin is an area of land where water collects on the surface and all drains to a common outlet, such as a river or a lake, in this case to Zaccus Creek. And there are multiple basins in Smamish, about 13 of them, and we're starting a program to look at all of our basins in the city and start a program of, you know, one basin at a time going through these. On this map, you see the pink lines show the Zaccus Basin Boundary. It's on the west side of the city on Lake Smamish. And in the green polygon there, just for reference, is the Tamarack Neighborhood. The purple polygon is the Montage Neighborhood, and 212th Avenue is on the kind of right side of the screen with Lewis Thompson zigzagging down until you get to the parkway. A basin plan, then, so now that we know what a basin is, a basin plan is a comprehensive document that describes both the natural environment, so our surface water features, as well as built conditions, so our stormwater utility features, because they both really interlock here in the Pacific Northwest and in our city. So, we look at both surface and stormwater issues, as well as potential solutions. So, we study the problem and propose ways to improve it. Some of those issues could be flooding, erosion, groundwater seepage that is hazardous, water quality concerns, as well as degraded habitat, things that come out of basin plans. Those solutions are capital projects, maintenance activities, education opportunities, and policy suggestions, not policies, policy suggestions that council would then adopt. So, a history of Smamish basin planning. We have done previous basin plans in, you know, 2004, 2011. We have the Inglewood and Thompson Basin, so the star there is City Hall for reference. Inglewood Basin is George Davis Creek, Thompson Basin is Ebright Creek. So, those have been done in the past, and in 2016, the city adopted a new Storm and Surface Water Management Comprehensive Plan. It identified basin planning as a priority action item. With that in mind, our stormwater staff kicked off this new era of basin planning, starting with Zaccus Basin. We're going to be using it as the template for future basins. We established project priorities, as well as a prioritization criteria matrix that we brought to council last year that council adopted. And this allows us to prioritize city resources, such as our funding and staff time, to focus on the projects that are most impactful. So, Zaccus Creek is what we're doing now, we're finishing that up. 2019, we've just started the Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan you see there, and in the future, we'll be looking at the Pine Lake Creek Basin. So, steps to building a plan, this is kind of what we've been doing since 2017 when we kicked off the Zaccus Basin Plan. We looked at data review, looked at all sorts of as-built conditions from developments, looked at groundwater levels and monitoring reports, geologic data, tons of data. We did field investigation, got boots on ground, looked at the creek, looked at wetlands, looked at neighborhoods, looked at drainage issues that we already know of. We asked the community, we had a couple of open houses, to listen to them, to see what those issues were. We identified issues by listening to them, as well as looking on the ground. And from those issues, we had a workshop where we developed capital projects, potential ones, they haven't been adopted yet, but we developed possible capital projects and strategies that would benefit the basin. So, where we are now, not checked off yet, is the plan review and approval, as well as implementation of those projects that we've developed. Here's a timeline. So, you can see, we kicked off this basin plan in November of 2017. We spent most of 2018 really working on this plan, you know, doing our field work, reviewing the data, having those open houses, and developing those projects and strategies. And here we are now in July of 2019, hoping to get your review and your approval to finalize and adopt this plan. There has been numerous opportunities for public involvement. We've had a couple of residential surveys, public meetings, virtual town halls at key locations. We had a basin plan comment period for three months where we opened, we posted the draft basin plan online and requested comments from citizens, and those comments are included in an appendix of the basin plan now. And I've been available the entire time over the last two years, or year and a half, to talk to residents, meet them on site, and engage. Just one more slide about community engagement. We've had, like I said, three open houses, those virtual and town halls, the draft plan posted online. Overall, I counted about, you know, we talked to about 70 different households, which doesn't sound like a whole lot, but this is a really small basin, so maybe only 500 households total. So, we're looking at over 15%, you know, engagement rate, which is actually pretty high. So, here is a summary of the results, you know, one, a visual distribution of the results. So, here are the storm and surface water concerns. Like I said, lots of different squares and triangles and circles, but every point here represents a drainage concern, and this will be summarized on the next slide. But just wanted to give you a visual overview of where we're seeing those concerns. There's a lot of citizen-reported, you know, water over the road and groundwater concerns in the Tamarack Neighborhood, as you can see. Our field investigations in Zaccus Creek, we saw a lot of erosion and sedimentation. You can see the circles there. We did some hydraulic modeling, which is indicated by those triangles, and those, the modeling results indicated that there was, those ditches and culverts are undersized at some of those locations. And we predicted overtopping of the banks of those ditches at those triangle locations. So, again, I'm going to describe this again on the next slide. A summary with pictures. So, like I said, there are those stream issues that we noted when we were on the ground looking at the stream. We saw channel incision and sedimentation in areas, which indicates a lot of peak flows, flashy flows that are scouring away the stream. You can see on the top left there. There are other surface water issues on the right side. Tamarack has a very difficult conveyance issue that they've been struggling with for years. Not just Tamarack, but other infrastructure in the basin is aging, and we looked at that to assess its age and condition. And as I said, there were modeled flooding and surcharges on Lewis Thompson Road at those culvert crossings.
Danica, can, oh, sorry. No, can you finish on this slide?
Okay, sure thing. So, other, the two other issues that we saw, just to, you know, wrap it up here, erosion and slope stability issues. We did see indications of landslides within Zaccus Creek. That could be from groundwater seepage causing instability at the toe of the slope, and then the slope sloughing down. And then we are concerned about, you know, habitat and aquatic health. There are fish passage barriers. There's one less now that the Zaccus Creek Fish Passage Project is complete, but there's another barrier at 206th Avenue. There's invasive vegetation, and we have water quality concerns, so.
So, I did have a question, but it's actually on the previous slide.
Oh, yes.
So, the modeling results, you said, were for ditch and culverts that are undersized, but I only note one that's up off of Lewis Thompson. So, are modeling, did you actually go and, I'm assuming, observed the ditches and culverts all up and down, even on the private infrastructure?
We did. Our field work did.
So, they're all fine up there, because we had had comment up here last week that they were not serving their purpose, so they're okay?
So, the modeling did not go all the way up there. We mostly did the modeling on the main Lewis Thompson Road.
Okay.
And there, we did note a specific concern on 210th Place, which is where that triangle is, and that is where we did visually see the water overtopping that location where there's the wall failure. So, we already have done projects to alleviate those two or three triangles.
Okay.
But we did not model all the way up there. We only had, you know, this much budget, and making that large of a model costs quite a bit of money.
Okay.
Okay, so from that compendium of drainage issues and concerns, we developed potential projects, both capital in the red stars and non-capital. This looks like a very patriotic slide. We just did, we tried to do our due diligence in generating projects. And you will note that there is kind of a lack of stars on the Tamarack Neighborhood. I will discuss that in a later slide. So, like I said, we developed these capital, conceptual capital projects, and I'll discuss those, and the non-capital being habitat, water quality, maybe policy suggestions right now. Sorry, next slide. And before I jump into that, the, sorry, for the project and plan implementation, so this, I brought this slide in to remind council of the resolution that was adopted last summer about stormwater prioritization criteria, which is, we know there's issues, we have a bunch of, we have a list of potential projects in the city. How do we compare them and make it apples to apples? This was our solution, and that's the stormwater capital prioritization criteria, where we can rank these basins projects against projects in other basins. So, every project can score a maximum of 100 points. The environmental benefit, a project can score up to 30 points there, 25 points if it is a facility or maintenance improvement. Safety, it can score, a project can score up to 25 points. Population benefited, there's a possibility of 10 points there, so the more people that are benefited, the higher the score. And then if there's an opportunity to partner with other projects, we consider that a time-sensitive opportunity, and a project could score more points. So, with that in mind, now I'll show you the ranked capital projects. The score is circled in yellow there. You'll note that those are not in order of number because some project scopes changed and we had to move things around, but the score is out of 100 points. Of these 10 capital projects, we developed conceptual design, so kind of a 10% cost estimate and schematic and scope of work for the top four. Again, that was budget-driven, and, you know, we wanted to allocate those resources to the most critical projects. So, the top four projects, there is a possible retrofit of the West Montage Vault to provide more flow control and water quality. We have a project on Zaccus CIP-2 to reduce sheet flow on Lewis Thompson at 210th. There's the Lewis Thompson Road Tightline, which I'll dive into more in another couple slides. That ranked the highest, actually, so 65 points. And then Zaccus CIP-4, which is intercepting that groundwater in the ditch adjacent to the parkway. And that's one that you've seen pictures already tonight, where there's sheet flow across the road. That project would capture that water on the east side of the parkway before it crossed the road and provide the water quality treatment there and reduce that safety hazard. There are also non-capital projects, so these are the blue stars on, you know, two or three slides ago. So, there's habitat projects where we would improve the habitat, you know, do more plantings or do some in-stream work. There's operational, that's denoted by the Traffic Cone, where we would do kind of more maintenance activities, less capital, more taking care of our infrastructure. There's policy suggestions, such as looking at property- There's policy suggestions, such as looking at property acquisition. There are water quality improvements, so there's removing trash and debris in the creek, implementing recommendations for water quality monitoring, which we've actually already begun doing, and then some other projects as well. So I wanted to give you a closer look on Zaccus CIP-3. This is the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line, and this is just kind of to show you what our thought process was when we developed all of these, these projects. So with each project, we discussed, you know, what the scope of work would be, those benefits, challenges, and we gave it a score as well as a cost breakdown. For this particular project, this would include tightlining Lewis Thompson Road, and there's multiple schedules, different options for implementation. And just note, adoption of this plan does not mean you're approving this project. This is just a, just a peek into it. So this project, though, would, it would give a formal drainage system to Lewis Thompson Road, which is just ditches, right now ditches and culverts. It reduces erosion and numerous outfalls to the creek, improves water quality because it would, it would include a water quality facility. There would be retrofit of an existing infiltration facility or adding more flow control. And there's an option to include non-motorized improvements with this project, so adding sidewalks, bike lines, bike lanes, better guardrails, et cetera. Challenges here, just we said flow control, siting, but it would be part of this project, absolutely. You see the project prioritization score there. Right now it's at 65 points with asterisks by safety, because this does address the safety concern of sheet flow across Lewis Thompson Road coming from 210th. But if you were to add motorized improvement, or non-motorized improvements to this project, that score would go up, the safety score, so this project would, would increase in score.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, you know, we just did a big project over there, and was this not part of it because this plan wasn't complete yet? I mean, there was extensive work done on the wall over there on Thompson Hill, and we had to repave the road, and it just seems like, in terms of the time sensitivity opportunity, right, that, I mean, maybe we missed it, but was it because we hadn't approved this plan yet?
Correct. We actually had not even developed this as a potential project at all.
I see. Okay, thanks.
And one thing I did want to note on here is that last meeting, when we talked about the private versus public infrastructure, we talked about a potential stubout from this project. We recommend not including that in this plan, because we're still discussing it, and as I'll show in the next couple of slides, there's obviously multiple options for council to consider with that issue. All right, so here's the what about Tamarack slide, because there was, you know, there were a lot of dots, a lot of concerns in this area, but there is no ranked project in this area in this basin plan. So as you know, there are a lot of unique issues if the city were to do a project here. You know, there's that easement discussion, there's what is the public versus private benefit, financing questions, and the question about precedent setting. All of these will be discussed at a future meeting when we come back to you. So it's, you know, it's tied very closely to the Zaccus Basin Plan, but I think it should be a separate issue because it's so complex. We did develop two projects initially with this basin plan, conceptual projects to address stormwater. They are in Appendix D, but they are not ranked. Our council, council direction from last meeting was that we will come back in the fall to present options pending our workload. As you know, we're losing our program manager, so pending workload, we're coming back, you know, as soon as we can to present these to you, these possible options. But again, we believe adoption of the plan as is gives council the flexibility to direct staff with, you know, and consider these complex issues without locking staff or council into one particular course of action in a basin plan.
Today I got to spend the day down at, down at Mercer Island for the King County Flood District, and I noticed that there is, on the budget for this year, there was a lot of new projects, road projects, in particular, for the very reasons of which we're speaking. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind when we're talking about adding a stub or something to help for the Tamarack area, that those are a lot of projects that are coming in from King County that are falling under the King County Flood District's stuff for funding. So I would, I would love to see that looked at.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're already applying for grants like that for other projects, such as George Davis Creek Fish Passage Project, the Zaccus Creek Project qualified for those grants. So as soon as we get an approved project on an adopted six-year CIP list, it qualifies for grants, and we would pursue grants for any project, large capital project we do, So the next steps for the basin plan is, is really the implementation and adoption, or adoption then implementation. So reminder that basin projects would be ranked against citywide projects. Staff suggestions for which projects should be included will be reflected in the 2122 budget and reflected in our 21 to 27 six-year stormwater CIP plan, which guides our work plan and staffing and budget resources. So our next steps, collecting and including council input to the basin plan. I've already collected citizen input, and there are some adjustment or additions that we're going to be making, so I'd like to hear any input council has, and then bring this plan back to you to adopt by resolution in the near future.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I think adding on to what Tiffany Mayor Moran was talking about, when I think about this potential tightline project and the fact that it ends down at the bottom of the hill there, and that King County is going to be doing work down there, again, it seems like we need to be really smart and opportunistic and coordinating our efforts to build whatever facility, even if we can't build the entire tightline project, that the work that's going to be done at the bottom of the hill, we should try to plan to do that at the time that they're working on the trail down there. Are there plans, or is anybody looking at what King County's plans are down there and how we can make sure that if we're tearing something like that up and we're building infrastructure, that we're doing it all at one time?
Right, good point. Yes, we've looked at the King County Trail Plans. They are not looking to upsize the existing culverts that are down right now at the intersection of Lewis Thompson and the Parkway. However, the project that we would do as part of that Lewis Thompson Tight Line would be installing flow control, where there really is none right now, so that's why we are seeing flooding. So a flow control facility would detain that water and then attenuate it or let it off at, you know, floor rates to match a two-year flood, and that is a very, you know, a relatively small amount of water. So it would, the conveyance that is in place now would be able to have that capacity for any conveyance it needs for our facility.
But is, is there any work that would be done in that same location that should be done at the time that King County's doing that construction?
We would be looking at something, a property that's completely within city of Sammamish limits, and I believe they, King County is looking at construction in the summer of '20. We cannot, I don't think we can possibly design and start construction anytime in that timeline.
Okay, thanks.
I don't see any more lights on, but I will say that I really appreciate the fact that you were able to come and present the basin plan, because I know originally it was on consent. And I think by the look of our audience, there are several people in the community that are keenly interested in the basin plan, so as we go forward, I would recommend bringing basin plans before council. It's, it's really nice to see all the projects, and, I mean, frankly, it gives you guys the opportunity to shine too, because you get to show us all the work that you did rather than just tucking it on consent. So thank you for all of your work on it. It's, it's nice to see it kindly come together.
Thank you.
Yep. So no more comments or questions on our end, unless you need something else from council?
I guess just, just a head nod to make the, there's one or two changes that's on this list that we can add to the basin plan, and I'll plan to bring it back for adoption via resolution in the fall.
I have one more comment that just popped up, Deputy Mayor Moran.
And this is just, this is probably just me, but I'm having a really difficult time trying to separate the issues that are happening in Tamarack from the Zaccus Basin. I'm just, I, to, to do, to me, to, okay, part of it is only doing half of the job. So I'm having really a tough time with that part of it, so I, I'm having a hard time separating the two. I think it's a package deal.
So I'll just add that we have included projects on private property in, in the basin plan in Appendix D, and if the basin plan is approved and the city council proceeds with direction to staff to do projects on private property, to partner with the local residents, those projects are already in the plan, ready to be more fleshed out.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Staff did a great job, and I'm very happy that we brought this before council, before she, or before they bring it back in the fall. If you have any other comments, something comes to your mind, something happens, please get it to staff as soon as possible. We can look to make some changes if needed, and then as we bring it back for final approval, we'll have everybody's idea and make sure we get everything that, that we need to in it. So like I said, if you have something, please don't hesitate and let us know. So, thank you. Thank you, staff.
Stewart?
Sorry, one more question. I noticed when I was reading through it that the, the project for montage, the montage project, also had items listed in it around private property. And so I was wondering if you could talk about how that is different than what's going on in Tamarack, and not to, not to derail that project, but to just understand why there's, there's work that's going to be done on private property in, in montage, and that's okay, but to do work on private property in Tamarack is somehow not okay? And I'm trying to understand the difference.
No, councilmember, you're absolutely right. We, we would never do work on private property unless, you know, there's the, the public benefit and it's approved by council, but we would need an easement, or we would need to purchase property. So the particular project in montage, Zach CIP-1, it involves property acquisition, installation, so then it would become a city, you know, publicly owned parcel. And then all work that we would do as part of that, that project would be on public property.
And is there not an option to do that same thing in Tamarack, to purchase the property, and then it would be a public benefit? I mean, I'm just trying to follow the same logic and understand why we would take one approach in one neighborhood, but not the same approach in a different neighborhood?
You're absolutely right. It would, and this is kind of getting into that other discussion, you know, linked but separate from Zaccus Basin Plan, but that is, that we would have to then own the streets. That's what you're talking about, is property acquisition would be owning the streets of Tamarack.
So how's it different? I'm sorry, and maybe this is just a rudimentary question, but, sorry. There are voices, I'm hearing voices. If we, if we have to acquire property in montage, we already own the streets of montage, so if we're acquiring property, we're acquiring something other than the streets, correct?
Correct.
So I'm confused, again, in Tamarack, how acquiring property, whether it's a street or not a street, is any different?
I think the main difference is the origin of the problem. The problems in Tamarack are, originate on private property to solve private property issues. The project in montage is to solve a very obvious public property issue of drainage on public streets.
And that the, the water originates on the streets? It doesn't originate on property?
It's on the streets. It's from the streets. Catchpays is on the streets.
Okay. It would be interesting to really clearly understand that. If there's more information that you could share or point me to where that is so that I could understand the difference more, I would really like to kind of dive in on that.
I can flush that out, definitely, the next time we come back to council.
Okay, thanks.
I think we're good. Thank you so much. Do we have councilmembers on? Okay, so, all right, we'll let you go ahead, and while we're shifting gears here. Do, Melanie, will it take you, how long will it take you? It seems really early to take. Okay, so our next agenda item is, is back to item one, which is the King County 2019 Comprehensive Solid Waste Plan. Let's make sure we've got councilmembers on the line here.
Tom is back on now.
Tom's on, or did he just call off?
Sure.
Nope, he's there.
No, I'm still on. Do you want me to try to contact Ramiro?
Did he, did he, did he contact you and say he was done with his meetings? Yet, or not? Oh, I think he's off to go contact him. But he may have put you on.
No, he never, he never contacted me.
Okay, I would wait, because I think that was Melanie's instruction. When he's done with the meetings, he's, he was going to text you and let you know to call him.
All right, happy to do it.
So we're, we're go then. Okay, yep.
Okay, we're ready. Good evening, Mayor, fellow councilmembers. I'm Andrew Zager, City Engineer, here with Pat McLaughlin of the King County Solid Waste Division, here to do a brief presentation on the 2019 King County Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan by King County. It was recently, I believe, adopted by the county council and is now going, making its ways through the local jurisdictions, local cities for approval and support. Once it meets the population requirements, it'll then move to the Department of Ecology for ultimate approval. We are here to do a presentation and answer any questions that the council may have. After that, I'll just ask for some direction on if the council wants to proceed with a resolution and support, which then we will bring back in next meeting, next week, for consent for approval. And with that, I'd like to just introduce Pat McLaughlin here with the Solid Waste Division, and he can proceed.
Good evening, and thank you again for the record. My name is Pat McLaughlin, and it's my honor to serve as King County's Solid Waste Director. I want to begin with apologies for not calculating my traffic time accurately, and my appreciation for your flexibility on your schedule to still accommodate me this evening. It is an honor to be before you, and talking about a plan that has been in the works for many years now. Our regional system is guided by this comprehensive plan, and when I talk about a regional system, it truly is a broad regional system. It serves most of King County, certainly all of it, over 2,000 square miles, 37 of its 39 cities, so all cities except for the city of Seattle, that does have its own solid waste system, and the city of Milton, which is part of the Pierce County system. But the remaining 37 cities, all the unincorporated parts of the county, serving over a million and a half folks, and geez, almost a million tons of garbage, represents this regional solid waste system. And this policy and planning document, which we call the Comprehensive Plan, is a really critical point of guidance for the region as we provide our waste prevention, recycling, resource recovery, and waste disposal strategies. And yet, this plan has not been updated since 2001. And we find ourselves at some critical intersections, particularly in the areas of waste disposal, and a lack really current guidance and policy framework. And I think we can all agree, a lot has changed since 2001. So we've been working across the region to update this plan. I want to point out that one of the strongest aspects of our regional system is the fact that it's a blend of both public and private partnerships. So just as we have partnerships with, with each of the 37 cities, cities in turn have relationships with private haulers, we too have a reliance on the private haulers who have made investments in infrastructure over the years, not just for collection, but for material processing and our recycling programs. And we also have a pretty substantial partnership at the landfill with a private entity that helps us produce energy from the waste at the landfill. We'll talk a little bit about that this evening as well. So it's, it's a very integrated system that has been serving the businesses and residents of King County for, for many decades, but as I said, we've got some big decisions to make. And tonight, although the Comprehensive Plan has a much broader focus, there's three areas that I think would be of greatest interest to your community and to the decisions before you this evening. So we'll focus on waste disposal, on the transfer services, and then recycling. And I'd actually like to begin with recycling. It's really one of the most important things we can do in terms of not burying waste, not having to worry about how to dispose of it, because there's great opportunities to not create the waste to begin with. Now, I have to begin by acknowledging Now, I have to begin by acknowledging that the region as a whole has a tremendous track record of recycling. I mean, we definitely live in a community across King County that has a value for recovering resources and diverting them back into the economy, and that's a wonderful thing. I also have to point out that, so we have a 54% recycling rate, which is tremendous. It's almost twice that of the national average. We know how to get that to 70%. We can do much better. And we can do much better by looking at communities such as Samamish. Samamish, for your single-family recycling rates, just as an example, are over 60%, about 61%. That is phenomenal, right? So what just your own community has demonstrated passion and commitment to, can teach much of the other parts of King County and unincorporated areas as well, of how to raise the bar. So in this Comprehensive Plan that's before your city for consideration, is a menu of options, some of them already adopted perhaps by your city, others that haven't been, that can raise the bar for all of King County. But we have left the individual opportunity of each city to be able to choose from that menu of options. That's good news and bad news. It gives cities really what they've asked for. They like that ability to develop their recycling programs and customize them, if you will, for their own community. And I can understand and relate to that, and we have done similar approaches even for unincorporated areas. But there's some bad news associated with that for all of us. We have effectively with 37 cities and the unincorporated areas, we have 38 different ways to recycle in King County, right? So depending on where you live, work, and play, recycling's different. And that breeds a lot of confusion. That confusion breeds a lot of contamination, and that contamination devalues the recyclables. And it even, that confusion can prevent people from even trying, they'll just throw it in the garbage. Today, this is a busy part of our season, we had probably close to 140 truckloads taken up to Cedar Hills Regional Landfill. I would estimate that about 120 of those trucks were actually filled with recyclables. So there's a huge opportunity to do better. And again, this plan identifies a menu of options. One of the actions is actually undertaken by the county, where we've committed to work not just with the city of Samamish, but with the 36 other cities, and with our own county council, to harmonize the way that we recycle, to not have 38 different ways to recycle, but to have one way to recycle. And that will take some concession and some challenges, but if we do that, and we also take some of the other approaches laid out in this plan, we can easily achieve a 70% recycling rate. And when we begin to talk about disposal, and I can share with you that we've identified the least expensive disposal option, after Cedar Hills closes, whenever that happens, any other disposal option's going to be more expensive. That's just a fact. So the least we can put through that next disposal option, the better. So really, there's a lot of opportunity to invest more effort and harmonize our approaches in minimizing the amount of waste we have to recycle and getting it back into the economy.
So before you move to the next slide, I feel like there's an opportunity here to pump the message of empty, clean, and dry. And I think a lot of people don't realize that. They put their recyclables out, the cardboard's hanging out the top, it gets rained on, and you may have just contaminated everything in your entire recycle bin by doing that. And so, empty, clean, and dry.
Mayor, I couldn't have said it better. Thank you very much. It's a simple message, and if you do that, I will even go on to say, and you still put it in the wrong can. Let's say you put something that was empty, clean, and dry, and you put it in a recyclable can, at least it's not going to contaminate what does belong in there. So that's a great message. Thank you for bringing that up.
Couple more lights that just popped on here. Councilmember Stuart?
Yeah, so you talk about trying to reduce the variety of ways to recycle. I would imagine that in addition to reducing costs because we can make Cedar Hills last longer, I would imagine it would also just reduce the cost of recycling overall. Is that true?
If the recyclables are cleaner, they have a higher value, and that reduces the cost associated with their collection and processing.
Okay, so I think that's another sort of data point, that as we move forward with this, it's great for us to have that kind of data to be able to communicate out to the community, to help people know that it's not just that we can increase the recyclables, but we can reduce the cost. We can save money two ways, right? By reducing or increasing their value, so we reduce the cost of collection and making Cedar Hills last longer, which I think is probably where the real cost savings is going to come in, I would imagine.
Well, I think we're at a very pivotal point in our recycling journey, and I think some of the challenges that we're going to have is that we have a tradition, you can even look at this screen, we're recycling all kinds of things because we technically can recycle them. Really, recycling in part is defined by a market demand for that material. And as you've learned through international events such as China's import policies, markets change, and there isn't demand for all materials. And so we also have to be aware, and maybe we'll find ourselves not recycling items that we used to. We should focus on the quality of the recycle stream versus the quantity.
So we used to have a message in general of reduce, reuse, and recycle, right? Recycling being the last item on the list. So are we still pushing the message of reduce the waste? I mean, the first and foremost should be reducing your waste, and then reuse things as much as you can, and recycling is the third best option, not the first option. Are there still programs and materials out there to help educate people on how to do those things as well?
Absolutely. And again, I just, it's so exciting to hear the council and the mayor talking so eloquently and on track with these points. We have to, and we do continue to focus on waste prevention as a first step. Food waste is a huge component, right? In fact, I like to say when we're analyzing, and we do, we do waste characterization studies, what's going into the landfill. The biggest piece of the pie is the pie itself, it's food waste. It's estimated that one out of four grocery bags just goes to the landfill, right? There's a lot of food waste. And so we have a variety of education and outreach programs, food too-good-to-waste campaigns. We work with schools, we have a green schools and an earth heroes program, including schools here in your own fine city who have been awarded for their progress in reducing waste. And a lot of it is just having those conversations. So it's a waste prevention, we couldn't spend enough effort in that part of the equation.
Deputy Mayor Moran?
Do you still have the composting classes and stuff like that for the food waste as well?
You know, I'm not certain. I think you're referring to the master composter certification programs, and I'll get some information about the status of that program. I'm not certain.
Councilmember, we'll have an update of kind of our status of our solid waste reporting, and we can provide some of those programs and what their availability at that time.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, I just want to circle back on the mayor's comment about clean, rinse, and dry. There's two lost opportunities. One is simply not placing recyclables in the recycle bins, and the other is not properly preparing it, cleaning, rinsing, and drying it. How big is that clean, rinse, and dry, or the preparation on recycles? Is that a huge lost opportunity? Or is, so should we really enhance education? And I've heard a lot about it recently, quite frankly, so I think the answer is yes, we're enhancing education, but...
Yes, it's the message. That's why I appreciated the mayor bringing that up. If there's only one takeaway, are you all listening? All right? It's empty, clean, and dry. And I know, I'm getting the wave over there, right? It's empty, clean, and dry. Because what's happened is that whether it's the cardboard, or the yogurt, or anything else, that drips out and stains, and you put that wet material in a container on the seas for several weeks, you open up that container, you've got all kinds of bacteria and mold and stench, and you know, there's no market for that kind of material now. So it is definitely empty, clean, and dry. Great dialogue, and that's just about recycling, all right? It's good to get warmed up. One of the other core responsibilities we have in the equation, we being the county, is we handle the transfer of the waste. So while you are contracting with private haulers to collect the waste curbside, in our interlocal agreements, and we have an interlocal agreement with you till the year 2040, and thank you for that, we've been a long partner, and it's great to know that we've got a long future ahead of us, you agree to direct all that waste to us to be handled. So the recyclables go into the open market space, but the garbage comes to us. And so we have these transfer facilities, eight throughout the county, plus a couple of drop boxes, and they serve two purposes, but their primary purpose is to be a convenient drop location for your haulers, so they can unload and get back into the neighborhood and continue to serve the community. So we have facilities across the urban area, and for several years, we've been modernizing those facilities, because they were all built back in the 60s. And some of them can barely fit a modern-sized garbage truck. Some of them have no recycling at all to be offered. The picture you see here is of our newest station, built just down the road in the city of Bellevue. It's called our Factoria Recycling and Transfer Station. It is, I guess, you know, a typical, what we call a modern station. It's fully enclosed. Its predecessor, which was open until this was ready, was an open-air station. It was like a carport. And you can imagine, very difficult to control noise, odor, and dust. It had no recycling services at all. Now, this modern facility looks more like an office building, has a full suite of recycling, can provide a quicker service. Customers can get in and out much faster. It offers a much more sustainable design in terms of the materials that are used and how we operate the station itself. And it's providing more equitable service levels, and that's what we need to do in all parts of the county. So right now, in the Northeast, we have a remaining station. It's the last one, excuse me, the last one slated for modernization. It's called our Houghton Station. It's hosted by the city of Kirkland, also built in the mid-60s, also an open-air station with minimal ability to control that noise, dust, and odor, has a tremendous amount of volume leaving the station because we can't compact the waste. When we compact the waste, as we do at Factoria and most of the other stations now, we cut the outbound truck traffic by one-third, very substantial benefit. What's interesting is the residents and businesses who use the station in Houghton, they're paying the same tipping fee that those use Factoria, and yet they're getting so much less. So it's really about addressing inequity in our transfer service. So the key transfer action within this Comprehensive Plan is to begin siting and building a new Northeast station. This would finish the modernization project underway and aid in our recycling goals as well, because a tremendous amount of recycling actually happens at the stations. The third area I'd like to cover with you tonight, and this is quite honestly perhaps the most time-critical decision that needs to be made, is where is the garbage going to go? This last week, we received certification and permits to begin using our newest cell. We call these cells by area number, and we're at Area 8. So it's the eighth cell at Cedar Hills. This is the only cell that is fully authorized to receive waste, and we've begun placing waste in it this week, and by about 2025, it will be full. We have to have a place for the garbage to go in less than 10 years. Now, we can go back over a couple of the areas in what we call Area 5 and Area 6 and do some top lifts, but we are reaching the built capacity of the Cedar Hills landfill. It's been in operation since 1965. It's allowed us to manage our waste locally at the lowest cost and with the least environmental impact. So it's been a great asset, and there is remaining capacity. It's a little difficult to see perhaps in the image on the screen, but in the upper-right segment of the aerial that you're looking at, you'll see some buildings. And those buildings are sitting on prime real estate, because those buildings are in areas that could be permitted for landfilling. And so the plan has identified those buildings to be relocated elsewhere on the site, and a final cell to be built on Cedar Hills. That capacity would take and provide the region disposal through about 2040, and then we would have reached our true maximum capacity within our established footprint at Cedar Hills. Before reaching this determination, we looked at options, and there are primarily two other options to consider. One is waste export, and that's certainly been the approach of the city of Seattle and Snohomish County for many years, and is available to us as well. There are some risks and concerns with waste export. One is rail capacity. There are segments of the rail already at capacity. So while we can estimate the costs, and the costs are greater than local landfilling, we're not sure that those costs actually reflect the total cost to address some of the capacity constraints that the railway will ultimately have to integrate. There's also some environmental implications associated with waste export, in that we have to transport this waste hundreds of miles in order to have it disposed at an outer-county landfill. So not as advantageous to being able to manage waste locally. Another option that we looked at was waste to energy. Quite honestly, we don't know as much about waste to energy as we do, say, waste export because of the local experience or local landfilling, which we've been doing for over 50 years. So we had to hire experts to help us better understand what the options and availability and impacts would be for waste to energy, and we were fortunate to do just that. We were able to secure Normandau and Associates, who built a team of renowned experts who've been involved in the most recent waste to energy projects here in the U.S. They also looked at international projects as well, because there's a lot to be learned from there. And what we found is that waste to energy is a viable option for this region to consider. It does work. It's not really a question of technology. There are financial and environmental implications that would need to be managed, and in a side-by-side comparison, you know, they don't really compare to local landfilling. But I think what we've discovered is that we have to take a hard look at what's next. Cedar Hills certainly can serve this region for a little bit longer, but it is reaching its finite capacity. And work to determine what follows needs to continue. So even as this Comprehensive Plan is hopefully adopted by the region, our planning can't end. If we want to pursue waste to energy, as an example, we're going to need the time to pull that off. And if we don't continue the planning exercise, then that will be removed as an option just because we ran out of time. The complexities associated with it are substantial, but that's not a reason not to pursue it. So what this plan calls for is maximize the remaining capacity with the asset that we have. That's the lowest rate impact available to our ratepayers, the lowest environmental impact associated with greenhouse gases, but it also builds us a runway to keep all options on the table, whether it's waste export, or waste to energy, or any other emerging technology that avails itself to the region going forward. So I'll pause there in the event you have some questions that you'd like me to address.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, you mentioned that Cedar Hills...
Yeah, you mentioned that Cedar Hills will max out in 2040. Do you know what recycling percentage is assumed in that?
I do, thank, that's a great question, right? Because, boy, if we're, if we're at 70%, we're at 54 now, and we get it up to 70%, that, that's a tremendous reduction of waste going into the landfill. But we didn't assume that. What we assumed is a very modest increase to 57% between now and that period of time. So we're counting on continued improvement. However, we don't have the regional commitment yet to that 70% plan, and so we did not assume that in our capacity planning.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so adding on to that, how do we get, here in Sammamish, how do we get from 61 to 70%? I mean, it's great that we're above the 54%, but we're, we're not at 70. So do we have concrete actions that you can give us, or ideas that we can go and build steps so that we can get to that 70%? I mean, we all need to do our part, and certainly if, if we have the capability to do it, let's go, right?
Absolutely. Yes. And so in this plan are very clear steps that can be applied here in the city of Sammamish. I mentioned you have a 61% recycling rate for your single-family homes. It's, you as other regions struggle with multifamily. Your multifamily rates are about 20%. Quite honestly, that's still better than most, right? But, so how, you know, and that's affecting your overall rate.
What about businesses?
Commercial recycling?
Yeah.
Harder, harder to measure, because that is really, you know, privately, while their waste is directed into our system, we don't have direct measures on their, on their recycling numbers.
Interesting.
I had a question on that. One of the things-
Hold on, hold on, because we've got to go and order our lights. Councilmember Stewart, are you-
I have a couple more questions, but if, is it okay if she goes if it's related?
You have the floor, so if you want to yield, if you want to yield the floor to her, that's fine. Okay.
A few weeks ago, I went to the Sustainability Summit that was in Kirkland, and one of the things that they came up with for, for Kirkland, as when we were talking about the restaurants in particular, was they had talked about all the things that had worked for them, and, you know, they had tried the plastic bag thing, and that didn't really work because they found that people were buying plastic bags in the stores then. But they found the one thing they wished they had done was the Styrofoam. And, and having, going to restaurants and saying, that's it, no more Styrofoam. And so that is, I mean, how helpful is that? Because that's something that can easily be done.
Yes, I think that bans and mandates are, are part of the process, and those are difficult, right? It's, that's a difficult part of trying to change behaviors. But we think that in part, and if you were going to start somewhere with bans and mandates, we would say, don't put single-use bags and shredded paper in the recycle bin. Because when you do, they don't actually get recycled. The bags get wrapped around equipment, the shredded paper looks like a confetti party, it blows around in the, in the sorting facility, it's a mess, it doesn't actually get recycled. So ban those materials from the recycle bin. Now, they are recyclable, right? There are some stores who will take those single-use bags back, that's the best place to put them. You can do shred events, and in bulk, that shredded paper will get recycled. So I think that bans and mandates are part of the solution. I think that every other week, garbage collection is another approach, and the city of Renton has had great success with that. And that's flipping it, you know, flipping it-
Right.
Between recycling, you do recycling every week. The reality is, if we're recycling correctly, that can fills up-
Right.
And you can dump that every week.
Right.
And you'll find that when you fill it up with recyclables, your garbage is actually a very small can, and you don't need, and the smelly stuff is going away every week, right? You're not hanging on to your food waste, or your yard waste. Get that going every week and have garbage every other week. It forces a different shift in mentality.
So what I, I'd love to see where you can provide us with sort of those, those list of recommendations, and when I think of the business community, I think of composting more, right? I, I think of, you know, yes, I go to Starbucks, but they're terrible, right? They don't have recycling and composting, whereas, you know, we have a Ben &amp; Jerry's pop-up, and they have compostable spoons, and they're working on compostable cups. So, you know, where we can shift to composting, to me, that's the ideal, right? Because that eliminates the, the waste in Cedar Hills, and we don't have to worry about the recyclables being contaminated. But anything we, where we can get a list of, of recommendations of things that we can do, whether it be from a policy perspective, or an education and communication perspective, you know, things like do the recycle events. I know we talk about Styrofoam, we just ordered some furniture, you know, that came, and we had to put it together for my daughter's room, and there's, there's like a mountain of Styrofoam, which is really annoying, but there's nowhere to take that, right? You have to wait for the next recycling event, which, you know, may or may not occur in my lifetime. And so, you know, those are the types of things that can we, can we figure out what's the, the right balance of those types of events? I'd love to see us get rid of that Styrofoam. There are other ways to package things, but we can't control all of that because those things get shipped into the city. But those are the types of things I think that would be really helpful for us, because in my mind, when I look at the environmental impacts and the cost impacts, the best thing we can do is reduce the amount of waste going into Cedar Hills and extend that to 2080, not 2040, right? And then we have plenty of time to figure out what to do next, and we save money and the environment along the way. So I think that would be the most helpful thing that, that we can do. I think, I applaud Kirkland that they're actually doing a sustainability master plan, and I would hope that that's something that we could get around to doing here in Sammamish as well, because I think that's what we need to be able to do, is to have that sustainability in every project that we do, whether it's a basin plan, and we're doing projects there, to road construction, to, you know, getting compost bins all over City Hall, so that when we're done with our meeting, we can throw these in the compost and not in the trash. So I think there's lots of things that we can be doing to get that worked into sort of our everyday practices. And if you have that information, that's great. I know I go to the K4C meetings, and we talk about other ways to reduce, you know, the impacts on the environment as well. So anything we can do there, I think, would be really helpful, so.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I've, hey there. I had a couple really good conversations with Councilmember Lambert about the waste to energy idea. And my three quick questions that I put down to ask you going into this is, when does that decision need to be made? In terms of getting it up and operational, all other things aside, best intentions aside, we do need to have at least a Plan B.
Yep.
And that may be Plan A, from my perspective, but when does that decision need to be made? And secondary, well, the second question would be, what is the environmental impact of the particulate matter? And I know that's a huge unknowable question. I'm sure there's a lot, you ask 12 scientists, you get 15 opinions kind of thing. But I, I guess my big question is, has that been analyzed? I, Councilmember Lambert showed me some information from Germany, I believe, where there was some significant research done that was very, very good news in terms of the particulate matter. And then the third question is, what is the energy output potentially? And I know that also bears the idea of what's actually going in, so we don't really know. So as we're trying to diversify our, our energy sources as a, as a community, is that a viable source of renewable, ongoing energy for our community, or is it just kind of a byproduct? Thank you.
Great questions. So I'll start with the, the first one. When does this decision need to be made? I think that what, what's encapsulated in this plan is the fact that we have to, we actually say this in the plan, that we have to immediately, upon adoption of this plan, begin planning for the next disposal option. Because we couldn't, if, if we wanted to have waste to energy in place by 2025, it just, it's just not realistically possible to, to cite, design, build, finance and have it in place. It's just, you know, and so we're out of time. Well, we don't want to be out of time if that's really reflective of what the region wants. So a couple things happen. We have been asked by our county council, and because we've heard from cities such as your own, that says, hey, we, we want to know what's next, and we want to have all the options available to us, and so how are we going to get there? Our county council has provisoed my organization to deliver a plan for how that's going to happen, right? Basically, a plan for a plan. This has to be a very collaborative approach, because whatever disposal option I choose, now, first of all, I don't choose it, right? It's the region that chooses it. And so today, I was able, at the beginning of this presentation, I was able to describe, our regional system is 37 cities in the unincorporated area of King County. If I choose waste export, will 37 cities want to be a part of that system? If we choose waste to energy, will 37 cities want to be a part of that system? There are different implications of that. Maybe 42 cities will want to be a part of one of those systems, right? Maybe this regional system is not what we've traditionally thought it, but maybe it's only 12. And these, the cities and the unincorporated areas pay for whatever system we, we elect, right? So there are some intertwined decisions. It's, it's what is in the interest of the region, and who wants to be a part of that system? We have interlocal agreements with you through 2040, and with this comprehensive plan, I have a basic obligation to provide you with a disposal solution. I can do it with Area 9. So the question's going to be, what will Sammamish sign up to for the next ILA period, out to 2080 perhaps? And what will the city of Renton sign up to, or the city of Bellevue, and the city of Kirkland? We're going to be asking ourselves that question. What do we want for the next disposal solution that we're willing to be a part of? So- That was a long answer.
No, I'm with you, and I'm looking forward to the other two as well, but I, I guess my-
Thank you.
No, no, but it is complicated, right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, right? I mean, that's kind of like an answer without an answer, right? So-
2020, the end of 2021-
Yeah.
I'm going to deliver a plan to our county council that outlines how that is going to be resolved.
Okay.
And we should, in the next five to six years, be able to produce yet another long-range plan, because these should be updated every five to six years, that our next regional plan should be updated within five to six years, and it outlays that answer.
So I'm just trying to think about how we get our agenda items here, and I would assume King County Council's not hugely dissimilar. Our staff, being outstanding as they are, does the deep dives, and that's what you're doing, right? You're taking the deep dives and trying to figure out exactly what makes sense. And not just environmentally what makes sense, but politically what's going to get passed, right? And I think the disaster scenario is you come up with the right answer environmentally, but politically it doesn't go anywhere. So when our staff, I take it seriously, when our staff sends a, there's a little recommendation, here's what we think's the right decision for you guys to do, but it's obviously your choice as policymakers. Are you in a position where you're going to say, here's the recommendation of the professionals as to what steps we should take, and kind of, you know, come back and sell the councils? Is the county council punting this to the cities all the way across? Is that what's going on, or?
No, absolutely not. The way this plan was developed was in collaboration with the cities, right, and our stakeholders.
Yeah.
We have two advisory committees. The executive, and I represent the executive in this, in this process, and ultimately the council, through their deliberation. So it, it's a very collaborative process. We don't have a plan if there are no cities, we don't have a plan if there's no county, right? It, it, it's, this is a partnership.
Okay.
Let me address your other two questions.
Thank you.
One of them, you asked about, from an environmental perspective, how can we, or how do we measure, and how do these compare, say, waste export, waste energy, or, or local landfilling? And the answer is, yes, you can measure that, and we did, and in fact, it's, it's within the plan. There's a very simple table that summarizes it, and I'll just, it's a chap, it's 6-6, Chapter 6, Page 6. Because that was a really important question. Now, go to different parts of the world, you might get different ways to measure things. And I'm not talking about metric versus, you know, you know, US standards or whatever, but I'm talking about what do our regulators require? Our, our primary regulator is the Environmental Protection Agency, State Department of Ecology, Seattle, King County Public Health. So we ask, what do they require? How do they want us to measure environmental aspects? And there's very prescriptive in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, and it's a, that is a key measure, particularly for landfilling, because of the breakdown of garbage and the emission of, of greenhouse gases. And so it's estimated that there are about 91,000 metric ton of CO2 equivalents each year associated with the Cedar Hills regional landfill. Okay? The, now, this is on a, on an annual basis. There's also a lifecycle basis, I'll share with you in a moment. It would be roughly the same at an outer county landfill, but when you then compare that to a waste to energy facility, it's not 91,000, it's 1.2 million, right? So it's exponentially larger. Well, why is that? Because you are incinerating the waste. When you burn anything, there are natural emissions associated with it, and those emissions contain greenhouse gases. Now, there, it's not to say that there's not air scrubbers in the sort, in place, there are, this can be done safely, but in terms of measuring greenhouse gas emissions, and that's what our regulators require us to do, 1.2 million metric ton equivalents a year compared to about 91,000. So it's a pretty measurable difference, and quite honestly, so too are the, the costs of, be primarily related to the capital. The cost of local landfilling, just for, just for the landfilling itself, about $41 a ton. Export, about $55 a ton. Waste to energy, about $136 a ton. So almost three times that of local landfilling. Now, this isn't just a financial question, it's not just an environmental question. It is also, you know, a feasibility question, a political question as well. So there's a lot that the region has to weigh to come to the right decision.
Can I, about the return on our investment potentially? That's a lot of greenhouse gases.
It is.
Any return for that?
I, I neglected to mention, the numbers I gave you at $136 a ton include the energy offsets. That assumes the revenue that is achieved, because this is waste to energy, and you could sell that energy. That, it's good news, bad news. Energy is relatively cheap out here. Hydro power, as you know, is, is very efficient. So the cost of energy is relatively low, so when I have energy to sell, the revenue is relatively low. Compared to, say, Florida, which is where more of the more recent projects have been successfully ventured, the cost of energy much higher, right? Cost of landfilling, well, landfilling is not even really an option in places like Florida, right? It's, water tables are so high, you can't dig a hole. So those factors are why waste to energy are, as a solution, can be more challenging out here. The energy associated with mass burn incineration is not currently recognized by the state of Washington as a renewable energy. In other states, it is. Well, if it were recognized, so a legislative action could change the equation and help, because a renewable energy has a higher revenue potential, right? So there are things that can be done. That's why I say, waste to energy is not off the table, it is an option, we, and we have to start planning, and I would say in the next five to six years, we need to be able to have the answer, which includes an understanding of what the regional system would look like with that answer implemented.
Thank you.
Great questions. Let me, just a couple more slides to, to wrap up. One is, I mentioned, this has been a, really a making in two years. We've had our advisory committees and the regional policy committee as well provide input throughout this process. In fact, there were amendments made to the plan based on public comment, because we've received a lot of public comment, particularly from neighbors around the landfill. And in response to that, amendments were made to the plan. Those amendments are reflected in the plan that's before you as well, in terms of how we use the buffer, the management of wildlife, particularly birds. we use the buffer, the management of wildlife, particularly birds, the use of interim covers, both daily cover, interim, and long-term cover to mitigate potential off-site odors, really respecting a settlement agreement that we have in place with the local neighborhoods with respect to heights at Areas 5, 6, and 7. A work plan, which I already kind of talked about, what happens after Cedar Hills closes, and that's really the work that will commence immediately thereafter. So also some interest about how roadway mitigation could be addressed for the roads near and around the landfill itself, and a request for increased transparency of reporting relative to some of the regulatory reports that we submit that will now become part of our annual report to the county council. So there was some additional enhancements that strengthened the plan through the process. Where we're at now in terms of adoption, now that the Regional Policy Committee has approved the plan, or county council has approved the plan, it's up to the cities. And after the cities, the State Department of Ecology will be the final weigh-in. The cities have until September 16th to take action. That action is typically in the form of a city resolution, either in favor or in opposition to the plan. This plan will be adopted based on the action of those cities who so move, either in favor or in opposition, as represented by 75% of the population of those cities taking action. You know, some cities have questioned, well, do we have to take action? You don't. You don't have to take action. But I want to point out that if this plan doesn't pass, we'll continue to be guided by our existing plan, which is old. And our existing plan says, when Cedar Hills runs out of capacity, you put it on a rail, right? So the default is, we will go to waste export. And I don't, this is just a personal opinion, this is not a decision, right? Because we could structure this any way we want, but I think once, if we ever decide to go to waste export, just like if we ever decide to go to waste energy, I don't envision us going a different direction, right? It's difficult to change direction once it's chosen. So I think one thing to consider is the risk of non-action, if indeed, waste export is not of interest or aligned with your city's long-term interest. What I like about this plan is it leaves all options on the table, and it doesn't foreclose on them. So you have, as a city, until September 16th to take action. I hope you do take action, and I hope you take action in favor of the plan. My hope is that the information I provided tonight will help inform that process. It's really, this process we're in is dictated by our interlocal agreements. It calls for 120-day period, and, you know, the State Department of Ecology will act when that period closes. So I would be happy to answer any questions that remain, and again, want to thank you for the opportunity to dialogue with you tonight.
Thank you. I don't have any more lights on, but council, do we have additional questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, how do we get the list of sort of action plans that we can share with our staff so they can review and figure out what might work for Summamish to increase our recycling to 70% for single-family homes, to set a reasonable target for multifamily? It sounds like 70% might be a little bit too high right out of the gate. And you also mentioned that composting is the largest percentage of our waste, so it sounds like we should be putting into some sort of a plan to try to reduce compostables in the waste and increase our composting. So if we can get that list of ideas and see if we can, as a council, agree to direct staff to take a look at that and see what we can do as a city.
Yeah. Page 4.7 in the plan is a discussion, and actually, a very simple illustration of what we refer to as our roadmap to 70%. It identifies the individual actions that can be focused, whether it's focused on mandatory food separation, a mandatory separation of wood, cardboard, and metal, just mandatory separation for cycling at multifamilies. It breaks it out, including the every-other-week garbage collection, also gives you an indication of how much percentage gain you should expect with each associated action. So that is in the plan before you, again, on page 4-7. And we'll be happy to sit down further with your staff or your council to discuss additional details behind that, but it is within your plan before you.
I would, I'd like to ask council if we could agree to direct staff to potentially put together a plan on how to set some reasonable targets and create a plan to help us move there as a city.
So I think, just as a quick question to the city manager, because I'm certainly supportive of the idea, but I guess the question is staff workload and ability to take that on. I think as a sidebar or an interim step, maybe, we have our communications department that could certainly be pumping out information. I think the empty, clean, and dry is a very simple and concise message that we can get out there, but I'm certainly supportive of what Councilmember Stewart's saying, but I guess, I'm just looking to cross-check, you know, staff's time and availability, considering the work plan, with whether or not they can produce what sounds like a more robust plan right now, or maybe what their timeline might look like in order to be able to do that.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Sure, we can do that. I mean, it looks like, from what we're talking about tonight, we're going that direction. Obviously, this is something separate from what this presentation is about, but we're happy to do whatever we can to make our city better, and always. And I think it's a great idea. And we can get more communication out as well, on our website and through our PIO, through Sharon, and I think this is, I think this is definitely the direction we need to go. As the city shows, we're doing our part, and also trying to increase, if you will, the time for the landfill, to maybe stay open a few more years, or find some options that we can deal with our waste more efficiently. I really like this plan, and I think it opens up more options going toward the future. But definitely, we would be willing to do that, so we'll go ahead and work with staff and then get that rolling.
Great.
And we'll add it to our list. It might not be tomorrow.
Of course, of course.
But we will work toward that in conjunction with what we're doing, what King County is doing as well.
Yep.
And like I said, I think all agencies should be looking at doing the same thing. So, absolutely.
Thank you.
Kristi?
Yes. Okay, hold on, just a second. Deputy Mayor Moran? I'll get you next, Ramon.
I was just going to say, one, especially with summertime coming for staff, I didn't want to, you know, be dumping too much on their butt. I would maybe check with Kirkland, give them a call, check their website, whatever it was, because they did, when we had this, they had the Sustainability Summit, they had some excellent information on all this, and so that might give you a big lead start.
No sense in reinventing the wheel. Councilmember Valderrama?
Yes, following along with both of them, I think that we should be careful not to do this in isolation. I think that it would be behooves us to see if our neighboring cities, I mean, earlier in the presentation, they talked about, well, that's great if you step up, but what does Renton do and the others? We should think about engaging our neighboring cities and see if there's something, either through Sound Cities or one of the other programs that we have, to work with our neighbors and come up with a solution together, because if we pick to do the 71%, and everybody else is, we're only going to go to 64%, I don't think that behooves us. And I think what we have to do is work collaboratively with our neighbors to get the real impact that we're trying to achieve, you know, region-wide.
Deputy Mayor Moran, do you have more? Or you're... No? Okay. Okay, so are we squared away on that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so I think we need to circle back to the plan itself, because I think our city manager is looking for potential direction from council tonight as to whether or not to bring forth a resolution, and I assume that would be in September, since we're off in August, or...
We're actually prepared to present the resolution next week.
Oh, okay, it's perfect.
Bam!
All right. So do we have any objections from council from that resolution coming forward? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so there you go.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time, and sorry about the traffic.
Thank you. Now, again, appreciate the accommodation this evening, and congratulations on your success.
All right, so maybe we should take a five-minute break now before we dive into that last subject matter, which is a discussion on the city council committees. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council. We have Mike Sugg with us. Very happy to have Mike here with us, so no pressure, Mike, but, and Mike's going to do a quick presentation for you, and I think his presentation includes some options for the council to consider, and we'll get right at it. So, Mike, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good evening, Mayor and council. As mentioned, we are here to continue the discussion on committees that was first brought up on your meeting last Tuesday, and tonight's staff are looking for council's direction on whether we need to make any changes to the committee structure. So in your agenda bill tonight, there are a few potential options. The first would be to dissolve all committees and remove any mention of the committees from your rules. The second would be to dissolve all committees without amending your rules, and your rules really do not require that you have committees. They basically just say that the committee structure shall be determined, shall be as determined by the city council. And so leaving your rules in place would allow the committees to be reformed in the future, if desired by this council or future councils. And the third option would be to dissolve just specific committees if there are issues with any one in particular, or just to leave, of course, the committees as they currently are. The full council should have received some additional information about the committees over email last night. This included details on how often the committees meet, the staff prep time requirements, and committee member attendance. And hopefully, that information will help with your discussion tonight. So with that said, if there aren't any questions, I will go ahead and turn it over to the council for discussion.
Great. I don't see any lights, and I did not see your email, so I was running back real quick. So I think, considering there's no lights, I will make a motion and see if we can get out of here quick. I would move that we pull the legislative and the finance committees back to the full council, and that would be in the air of both public transparency and full council interest in the items that are tethered to those two committees, and then as well as decrease staff time for duplication of subject matter that we might cover. So I was actually surprised to hear that the finance committee's not meeting all that often, and considering that we just passed our Transportation Improvement Plan with an $88 million budget deficit, I think the finance committee will be of keen interest to everyone on the council, and I think the public is going to be very interested in what suggestions may come out of committees. So I think that would be better to, and I know that the committee meetings are public anyway, but when we're all sitting up here at the dais, I think there's, it's videoed, and the public can then go back and watch. Committee meetings are not videotaped and are not readily accessible to the public to hear subject matter, and minutes are not super detailed. And then as far as the legislative committee goes, I think we had great success this past legislative session, and I think that's in part due to the fact that we finally have lobbyists on our behalf, working regularly down in Olympia, and we had a great success with the de-annexation relative to the parks for the Montine and Aldera neighborhoods. So I think we have some momentum behind us, and I think there's interest within the community as well, so in that same vein, and I think the council as a whole is very interested in what we are doing moving forward as well. So that would be my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so now we're discussing the motion on the floor. Councilmember Stewart?
Sure, I just want to ask, why are we jumping to let's eliminate council committees? Why aren't we asking, how can we make our council more effective, and would adjusting how the committees function help with that goal? Are we making a decision here based on what's best for the community and for the staff? Because if I read the memo from Mike Sugg, basically, if I read it correctly, it states that the work done to support the committees is not additional work, it's generally work that has to be done to prepare, to submit to council, and that it's helpful to get that feedback and bring it on to council. So there isn't really additional staff time that's used there. So are we really doing it for that, or are we catering to a council member who hasn't made this work a priority, because he isn't available or won't make himself available for committees? I find it interesting that we're targeting the finance and legislative committees. I think the legislative committee is by far the most productive committee that we've had in the 18 months that I've been on the council. It has produced some really great results. Committees aren't intended to just be a place where staff comes and presents things, and we rubber stamp it and bring it on to the council. It's supposed to be where we can dive in and get some work done and roll up our sleeves. And we are able to have more candid, more, just dive-in conversational working sessions in committee. They are open to the public, everyone can attend. Certainly, all the council members, because we notice them, all the council members can attend, so there's nothing hidden. But it's just an opportunity to really have a more productive working session, and we can do it during the day, so we aren't asking Mr. Sugg to stay here until 8:30 at night to have a conversation. We can do it during the staff's workday. So I just think that it's very surprising to me that that's where we started with let's eliminate committees. It is surprising that the finance committee hasn't been meeting, and no offense to Councilmember Ross, he's a good person, and I like working with him, but that is part of the reason why I wanted to be the chairperson of the committee, so we could get the meetings scheduled more regularly, and we can also get the council reports out, because one of the challenges that we've had with all of the committees has been that we haven't been getting the reports back to the council. So what I'd like to see us do is say, hey, how can we make these committees more effective? Councilmember Ross has great ideas, he was able to provide a lot of insight in the finance committees, ask a lot of questions, ask the staff to be able to do things that the staff might not have the answers for, and that gives them the time to go get the answers so that they're not put on the spot when we're asking them up here on the dais and they don't have an answer. So I think the committees are very helpful, and I would hate to lose that ability for Councilmember Ross to be able to use his financial expertise and be able to have those conversations in the committees and have those sort of back and forth with staff where it doesn't feel so formal and so much like we're being, you know, people are being watched. So I think that that is just an interesting proposal. It's interesting that the other committees aren't being proposed to be eliminated. Why just the legislative and finance? Why not then public safety as well? Why does that one stay? It just doesn't make any sense to me. You know, either way we go, keep the committees, don't keep the committees, that's fine. I still think that the fundamental question this council needs to be asking is, how is it that in 18 months, we've really not gotten anything accomplished? And it isn't because we have committees or don't have committees. I think there are some more fundamental issues, and if you want to try to blame the committees for something, I think that's fine, use it as a scapegoat. I have a list of recommendations here that I think we could implement to make the committees more effective, if anybody's interested in actually making us more effective, if this is just a, you know, let's, I don't know. I don't even know where this is coming from. I mean, I just, it is beyond the pale that the council member who has abdicated all of his responsibility from the committees is the one that proposes that we eliminate the committees. I just, it's crazy. The legislative committee is in part very productive, because we were able to have these 15-minute, every, was it every week or every other week, check-ins during the legislative session with the lobbyists, things that we can't do. We don't have that kind of agility here on the dais with our scheduled meetings. So I just, I just think it's sad that we would eliminate a tool that could be sharpened and made more effective if we decided to work together, as opposed to, we're going to just throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think that it's interesting that we're going to try to take, you know, a way, anyway. I think if you look at the list of committees and who are on the committees, I think it's pretty obvious what this motion is about.
Councilmember Ritchie?
I cannot support the motion, but I respect that it's coming from a good place. I serve on the two committees that are up for the chopping block today. I think, at least from my perspective, more to the motion maker's statement about the lobbyists, those lobbyists took a lot of, there's a lot of information that went back and forth, and I think our management analyst, Mike Sugg, will attest to this, that, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but correct me if I'm wrong, that those meetings with the legislative committee were very informative for those that came. I know... I know Mary was there, and Paul Stickney, and some of our folks that came in from the public. Inasmuch as that committee was able to listen and get good information and help bring that information back, and our chair, Councilmember Valderrama, was able to provide consistent reports, sometimes the news isn't good. Sometimes there's ideas that come out of there that the council doesn't like. But I think that the idea of a -- we have a part-time legislature, and that legislature is currently out of session, but when they're in session, things move pretty quickly. And those lobbyists that we hired and that we're paying, you know, a good sum for and that were very productive for us, they didn't do that by themselves. They did that with the help of our management analysts, our committee, and this council. And I think that that relationship should continue. I mean, are there things that we can do to be -- to do things differently? Absolutely. But I do think that by spending that significant amount of money on that lobbying team to go down to Olympia and represent our interests, that doesn't happen in a vacuum. That happens because of an ongoing conversation. And I, from my perspective, we have a lot of really long council meetings. They run really late. We're all very verbose, "I'll be first to raise my hand being guilty." But I would think that just in the interest of time, that getting rid of both the legislative committee and the finance committee, or any committees, is going to extend our meetings into the night even more than we already do. So I can't think that that's a good idea, and I don't know of any one issue or any series of issues that came out of the committees that were so bad or so detrimental or so secretive or so nefarious that would cause this to happen. So I don't understand more to what Councilmember Stewart said. I don't really understand where the motion's coming from or the idea's coming from, but I respect everyone has their own opinion and their own perspective. I would just venture to say that the finance committee has some very important things coming up, as we talk about the, oh my god, the crossover point. We have, you know, some major road infrastructure projects coming up on our tip. We have, you know, CIP with, you know, the Zakuus Basin. We have some important, financially important things that are coming down the pike here that we need to be talking about in a committee, and all the things that we deal with come through that finance committee. Everything we touch seems to be connected with some sort of financing behind it. So I would think that we should, if anything, not kill that committee and not kill the legislative committee, maybe better utilize them. Maybe have more people on them, maybe have less people on them. I don't know what the answer is, other than not getting rid of -- getting rid of them doesn't seem to me to be a good answer, from my perspective. So with due respect to the people making the motion, I would think that we should continue where we're going, make changes as we're going, and continue to utilize the committee system as we have to have more effective council meetings and a more effective city council. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I've got you in the queue, Tom. Deputy Mayor Moran.
Oh, this is Merrill.
Oh, sorry. Well, then you're after Councilmember Hornish and after Deputy Mayor Moran.
All right.
But you're next. Ish, I think, I hope. Okay, well, I just wanted to point out that one, I was the one who said over a year ago that committees were a problem, and they continue to be a problem. And that's only because I saw it with the popular committees, and I've come to the conclusion that I don't -- I don't know if it's personalities. I don't -- I'm not gonna try to guess what it is, but I think what the -- I think what the big thing of each committee, of those two committees, is everybody wants a say in those two committees. I think what happened with the legislative committee is it became the most productive because we got the lobbyists on board. The lobbyists, when the lobbyists were brought on board, that committee should have been looked at again and then decided whether it needed to be a committee anymore, and it never did get that look. And it should have been looked at to be assessed as to whether or not that committee needed to exist or whether it should have been brought to a committee as a whole. That never took place. In my estimation, that should have happened then. The finance committee, you know what, looking at the tip, guess what? I think every one of us better be involved in looking at finances of the city, because every one of us is gonna have constituents that are gonna want an answer. So I think that's what has happened, is those are two very important things as far as, you know, wasting time at meetings. Wasting time. Every time something is done at a committee, it comes here and it is gone through again because we don't trust anything that comes out of a committee. So what's the point? So I don't see that it takes any more or any less time. So you know what? I think that if we want to do away with all committees, hey, I'm there for you. But if we're just gonna do these two to the end of the year and have it reassessed by any new council that comes in, I think that's reasonable, because I can tell you from talking with other previous council members, talking with Ken Kilroy, and then talking with another previous council member, you know what? That's what they did. Every council is different. Some work well with committees and some do not. I don't think that we should sit up here and try to spit at each other, because sometimes it works and sometimes it just doesn't. Let's just look at the fact that it just doesn't right now, and let's move on. Let's get to the end of the year, and let's let the new council decide whether it's gonna work for them or not.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yes, thanks. I want to first address the innuendos, but I'm the one that brought this up, but I'm not on any committees. If you look at the list, I am on the governance committee. I am also on the YMCA committee for council representation in those discussions. So the accusation that I am not on any committees is just outright false, and by the way, I'm attending all of my committee meetings. By the way, I'm attending and am on time for all of the council meetings. And with this new scenario, I expect to even do more as a committee of a whole and participate in those as a council member or a council -- or for a committee as a whole with all the council members. Second issue, staff time, I believe would be lessened. Mike, I appreciate the memo. I'm not sure it reads that there is -- that you're gonna spend the time doing it anyhow, but I think there is incremental time to do the committee. You talked about doing the minutes, and if you add up the number of committees that we have, I think that does add up to a significant number of hours of staff time. And I have heard from staff members that they do feel like they are repeating things twice and is not the most efficient, so I think this is a good proposal. Number three, I actually think it will help city council function better as a body for some of the reasons that Councilmember Moran just stated. I think Councilmember Ritchie even said, "Let's add more people." Well, we can't without an open public meeting. Let's add more people to the committee, which is actually good as a committee of the whole. So I actually think we will work better together as a body and kind of addresses Councilmember Stewart, who is, "How can we improve it and work better as a body?" And then finally, I think it also adds the benefit of, and I think Mayor Malchow kind of alluded to this, we are now talking about it in a clear, public meeting. We asked, the other meetings might be public, but they might be during the day. People may not know about it, may not follow them, but if we do it at a meeting, I think the public would be better informed and get more information as well. Then finally, to say that our council meetings are long, all I can say is you should have been here two years ago. 2:00 AM, going home. Our meetings are not that long right now. I think we have room, and we're running much more efficiently as a council these days, so I think it makes more sense, especially with some of the hard questions we have coming up on finance and the legislative have been discussed. So I will support this.
Okay, a few more comments. Yes, oh, that's right. Councilmember Valderrama, you haven't had a run yet.
Oh, thank you for my run here. Well, first of all, I don't understand the timing of this.
Councilmember Valderrama, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak up or move closer to the phone?
Let me switch it off to this phone.
That's much better.
All right. Okay, first of all, I don't understand the timing of this request. We're now in mid-July. There are no meetings in August. We only have one more, I believe, for July. December, you normally have one meeting. In November, you normally have only two meetings. So compared to the balance of the year, there are not that many meetings left to begin with for the council. Second, as we look at that and we look at the timing of this and what's taking place here, the two that you're looking at doing away with are the ones that are probably the most productive and haven't been consulted. On the legislative side, we did bring in a consultant to help us. However, the consultants will tell you that they leaned on us quite heavily onto it. I made four trips to Olympia, accompanied them at their request to be able to go out once with some of the peers on the group. Others have gone separately. It didn't just happen because of them, and they constantly were going back and forth trying to meet with us in ad hoc meetings so they didn't have to go to the full council, and we would bring those recommendations to the council. By trying to bring this all the way forward to a full council, they themselves are nervous because there are some things they want to discuss in smaller groups. Additionally, I should point out that when these meetings for the legislative have been at the request of the council, open to all council members, specifically so everybody could participate in. And Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, but of all the meetings, only twice did anybody call in outside of the committee members. We did have Senator Moran stop in on one or two, so there's been little enthusiasm for attending these. Also, the issue of staff time, and we've been talking about the staff time. Staff has said, as our city managers, it just caught them off guard, and it is gonna include more time. They don't want more study sessions. Morale's already beaten down, and we're looking at adding more onto it. Finance committee, likewise, everything we're touching, and particularly with all the havoc that we've rested or incurred on our city, needs to be looking at how we're gonna pay for any of this stuff that we're now talking about. Revenues, as I understand, are being looking at dropping significantly here. And as was mentioned earlier, our last city manager said, "At best, we do a paltry amount at this council." He called us a "do-nothing" council. So we've gotta look at how to be more effective, not to how to block any progress going forward. If you want to open the finance committee, just like you did the legislative, so everybody can call in, and I can assure you that in the next six meetings of the council, and probably only two more finance meetings to begin with, we're gonna have the same results of regaining the legislative. So it seems to be absurd. It's not saving time. It wasn't even run by the consultants or the staff before this recommendation was made. So I don't understand where it's coming from, what savings are coming out of it. Recall that in the end of the year, two council members, myself and Hornish, are stepping down. Malchow is running and may or may not be back there, so you may lose almost half the council. Why not leave it till the end of the year, let the next council deal with it on the retreat, which, by the way, for some reason, we didn't have a retreat this year? So again, as one of the things that we do to ourselves not to be productive, we normally address these kind of issues. So I'm opposed to this motion, just because I think we're wasting a lot of time here speaking about something when there's really very few left legislative meetings because they're out of session. And the findings, how many times more can they lead at most, too? I just find this whole thing absurd. Thank you.
Okay, so I want to address a few things. First, it was mentioned that, you know, committees were established to take deep dives on matters, and I think that's one of the reasons that I proposed the committees I did, is because I am keenly interested in taking deep dives on those committees for both legislative and finance. Councilmember Valderrama just mentioned that we didn't have a retreat this year. We had one scheduled. I'll remind you, it got snowed out, and our then interim city manager, Larry Patterson, wanted to wait until our new city manager was seated before we did anything. It was mentioned about not understanding the timing. For me, this is, we're about to start talking about our legislative priorities for 2020, so the timing is perfect for that, and we just passed our TIP that identified some serious concerns relative to our future finances and how we're gonna manage them. Mr. City Manager, we had our agenda meeting yesterday. You seemed to indicate that there was some staff concern relative to time spent at committees. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, it is.
Could you elaborate so that we could all be enlightened?
There wasn't really any elaboration on it. It was just that the idea being that what we talk about in committees, we rehash and we talk about it all over again at the council meeting. That was the gist of basically what was said, and it wasn't anything to slam anybody or do anything against anybody. You know, the purpose, obviously, of committees is to gather information and do reports to the council. But yes, there was a comment made that we go through this, and then we have to go through it again for a second time with council. That's fine. I mean, it is what it is at this point. I just hope the council comes to a decision on what they want to do tonight.
So prior to the four other members of the council that are sitting up here with me, but Councilmember Valderrama and Councilmember Hornish were on the council at that time. We used to have a transportation committee, and it was a committee I used to sit on. And because of these same things that I'm saying today, which are, there was a great interest by the entire council for the projects that we were talking about. We talked about Sahali. We talked about Issaquah Falls City Road. Those were brought forward. There is no transportation committee anymore for that same reason. And I'll be honest with you, when I hear that we haven't accomplished anything in 18 months, I think we've actually accomplished some pretty good stuff. We have a far better concurrency methodology in place. We passed some far better development regulations, and we've worked on stormwater, just to name a few. That is not nothing. Councilmember Ross.
Yeah. I support the motion. I think those are two key committees that need to be more active. Legislative is very active. I think the full council needs to be engaged in both. Finance needs to ramp up on a regular basis to come up with both an approach and strategies to manage our upcoming financial risks that we know about, the tip, the CIP, everything. And I feel like the committees have lost their purpose. I think the committee always was intended to be directed by council to do a special task and then come back with that direction. Now these committees are coming into self-initiated work teams, and that's creating the chaos, the confusion, and it's not representative across the council. Blind ambition of certain members seems to be gaining a way of productivity. So I am totally supportive of the motion, and I'll just leave it there, and I hope we can close this, because I want to go home to my guests.
We got two more lights on.
Can I add me two, please?
Yep. Councilmember Stewart.
Well, I would just like to say, if that's how you guys really feel about the committees, then again, I don't understand why you're not proposing to eliminate all of them, but you're just targeting those two. I think it's hypocritical to say that, to say that there's blind ambition. I think it's ridiculous. Just to be clear, all committee meetings are open, public meetings. They are all noticed. All council members are welcome to come to all committee meetings. So people who don't come, that is a choice, but they're out there, they're noticed, they're on our calendar, they're on the website, and so that's just, you know, that's just silly. I do think that finance needs to do more work. It's fine. Either way's fine, but I think it's hypocritical to target those two and to say that the others are somehow different or special, so.
Councilmember Ritchie.
I would like to offer an amendment that we include all ad hoc and standing committees in, as a committee the whole, for the remainder of this year.
Second.
Okay. The amendment has been moved and seconded. All debate is now on the amendment. Councilmember Valderrama, you were in the queue. Did you want to speak to the amendment?
Well, I was gonna mention that that task force for the YMCA, that ad hoc committee, affects 20,000-plus of our citizens.
We're having the same problem we were before. Hard time hearing you.
Okay, hold on. Hopefully that's better. I was going to speak to the issue that's related to that in particular, the task force for the YMCA that we've had that was just mentioned earlier. That affects one-third of our citizens. I do believe that should be raised to the council as a whole.
That would be covered under the amendment as proposed.
That's correct, and that's what I'm saying. It's not one in particular as part of this amendment, so I'm supportive of the amendment because I do believe that a number of these ad hocks now rise to that level. Thank you.
Okay. Any more comments on the amendment? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment, which is to move all of the committees back to the council, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we're bringing all the committees back to the council. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Don't need to do a main motion, because the main motion is...
I move, we adjourn.
There's, I need to ask about council reports, city manager reports, prior to...
It's a special meeting.
It's on there, so I'm just asking.
The reason why it's on there, it's on there because that's the way the agenda's set. But if there's nothing under them, we don't discuss.
I move, we adjourn.
Councilmember Ross.
At the beginning of this meeting, Mr. Sugg's mentioned... At the beginning of this meeting, Mr. Suggs mentioned that the policy, whether we change the counting policy or not, I recommend we don't, we leave it as is. And I just want to make sure what's clear.
Well, hold on, hold on, everybody. We have a motion on the floor.
We do, we have a motion.
We need a second first.
It's been seconded.
It has been seconded, okay.
The Councilmember Ross had his light on before the motion was made. I just wanted to at least call on him. Okay, so now we can have discussion on adjourning. Councilmember Ross, did you, you got...
Is the motion of adjourning open?
We're, we are now currently debating whether or not we will be adjourning this meeting.
Okay. Is it clear? I guess, speaking on that, no.
What I can tell you is my motion did not include changing our council rules.
Okay, so I'm good. I'm good.
All right. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we are adjourned.